Jackson, Counsel Lamatina, Counsel McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counsel Wu, and Counselor Zachem. We have a quorum.
Okay, I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. So at this time, I would ask for all councilors and guests to please rise. And Counselor Zachem will come to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After that invocation is delivered, please remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, everybody. It is my pleasure and honor to introduce Ambassador and Reverend Charles Stith to the chamber this afternoon. Charles is not only an incredibly accomplished leader in our community in Boston, but is recognized across the world for his work, not only as ambassador to Tanzania in the late 1990s, but his work at Boston University, the African Presidential Program, and continuing that work across the world. I could go on about his resume and why he is so qualified to be here with us, but, you know, on a more personal note, I would just like to say that Charles has been a dear friend, a family friend, a friend of mine for years. I think he was present at some of my very first public speaking at the Black Jewish Passover Seder that he and my father organized many, many years ago, and that still continues to this day. So I would just say it's a unique opportunity to welcome him here. The last time, I believe you were here, Ambassador, was on the day I was sworn in to this body. So it's really exciting for me to have you here to share some of your knowledge and to pray with us as we begin our session today. So without further ado, Ambassador Charles Stith.
The prayer is going to be short, so I'm going to entertain just a moment of liberty to say how much I appreciate this invitation. And as Counselor Zachem mentioned, I'm a longtime friend of his and his family, and so I come with a great deal of personal pride, you know, with his invitation to be with you today. It's also good that he and I talked about it, look around the room and to see that the median age for this council has dropped somewhat precipitously. And I think that's a good thing. Our city is at a critical point where renewal is required, and it's helpful to have new, young blood with exciting, fresh, and robust ideas as a part of the mix. A little something old, a little something new, and it's always a good thing. I'm also glad to be here today, just to reinforce that I'm not nearly as menacing as that picture looked in the Herald today. I'm really a nice guy. It's a joy to be with you. Let us bow our heads. Lord God, thou who art great and gracious, merciful and mighty, thou in whom we art all one. I pray your blessing upon the leaders of this August body, that as they deliberate, that they keep before themselves first and foremost that this city is a beautiful mosaic, and that it is their charge to make sure that this fabric is never torn asunder. Let your wisdom, your grace, your mercy abide upon them all. Hear this prayer, oh Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the One Nation Under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Thank you so much, Ambassador Stith, for your message and for being with us once again. Madam Clerk, please record Counselor Flaherty and Counselor Jackson as being present as well. Okay. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0220, Message and Ordinance Amending CBC Ordinance Section 10-10.3, Collection of Records Directory and 10-10.4, Report in Statistics Supplies to the City of Boston, filed in the office of the City Clerk on February 1, 2016.
Docket 0220 will be sent to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0221, Message and Ordinance Amending CBC Chapter 9, to create Chapter 9-9, I'm sorry, 9-9.14, Regulations of Student Housing, filed in the office of the City Clerk on February 1, 2016.
Docket 0221 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0222, Message and Order Approving a Home Rule Petition to the General Court Entitled "An Act to Regulate Lobbying Activities Before the City of Boston."
Docket 0222 will also be sent to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0223, Message and Order for the Confirmation of the Reappointment of Dr. Misha Minter Jordan as a Member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health, for term expiring January 15, 2019.
Docket 0223 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 0224, Message and Order for the Confirmation of the Appointment of Frances Doyle as a Member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health, for term expiring January 15, 2019.
Docket 0224 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. Reports of Public Officers and Others.
Madam Clerk, Madam President, I will read the
Yes, please. 0225 through 0227 together, please.
Thank you. Docket number 0225, Notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the Mayor and papers acted upon by the City Council at its January 13, 2016 meeting. Docket number 0226, Communication was received from William F. Welch, Clerk of the Senate, regarding the special election to be held on Tuesday, May 10, 2016, to fill an existing vacancy in the First Suffolk District and Middlesex Senatorial District caused by the resignation of Anthony Petraselli. And docket number 0227, Communication was received from Timothy J. Smith, Executive Officer of the Boston Retirement Board, regarding certification and transmittal to City Council of the Boston Retirement System Calendar Year of 2016 Operating Budget.
Docket numbers 0225, 226, and 227 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0228, Communication was received from City Council President Michelle Wu, calling for the election of City Clerk, for term commencing on February 3, 2016, and ending on February 1, 2019.
Okay, so at this point in the agenda, we will pause and take up the matter of an election of City Clerk. I want to read the section of the City Charter to explain why we're doing it today. It's sort of written in that we have to do it after the first Monday of February every three years. And then after that, we will open the floor to entertain nominations for Clerk, close nominations, and then take a vote. All right, so this is Section 52 of the Boston City Charter, Term of Office for City Clerk. In the year 1911 and every third year thereafter, a City Clerk shall be elected by a majority of the members of the City Council to hold office until the first Monday in February in the third year following his or her election, and thereafter until the successor has been duly chosen and qualified unless sooner removed by due process of law. The City Clerk shall act as Clerk of the City Council established by this Act. So as you hear, it's a position both for the City of Boston, but also for us as a body in particular. So at this time, I'd like to open nominations for the position of City Clerk. Are there any nominations? Counselor Baker? Second, from Counsel Jackson, are there any other nominations for the position of City Clerk? Nobody wants a job change? Okay, so is there a motion to close nominations? Counsel, Counsel Lamatina moves to close. Is there a second? Okay, so at this point, we will have a roll call vote administered by Mr. Assistant Clerk. Please, so please say the name of the person you wish to serve as Clerk. The only name put forth is our sitting City Clerk, Maureen Feeney. So you can say the name, or you can choose to remain silent.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, Maureen Feeney. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, Maureen Feeney. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, Maureen Feeney. Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Asabi George, Maureen Feeney. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, Maureen Feeney. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, Maureen Feeney. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, Maureen Feeney. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, Maureen Feeney. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, Maureen Feeney. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, Maureen Feeney. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, Maureen Feeney. Counsel Wu.
Maureen Feeney.
Counsel Wu, Maureen Feeney. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, Maureen Feeney. Congratulations.
We have a unanimous vote, Madam Clerk, and thank you so much. Congratulations. All right, putting her right back to work. No break. Reports of committees, please, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0101, The Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on January 13, 2016. Docket number 0101, Message and Order for the Confirmation of the Appointment of Mark Sacconi, CPA, as a Member of the Audit Committee for the Term Expiring November 20, 2020. Submit a report recommending the appointment ought to be confirmed.
Counsel Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So the Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing last Thursday, the 28th. I want to thank my Vice Counselor Sally Lamatina, as well as Counsel Asabi George for joining me. The hearing was for the confirmation and appointment of Mark Sacconi, who is a professional CPA, as a Member of the Audit Committee for a term expiring November 1, 2020. We were joined by Sally Glora, the City Auditor, and Mark Sacconi, the appointee. The Audit Committee is responsible for providing oversight to Boston's internal and external auditing activities. They meet at least once per quarter and report to the Mayor and the City Council. Mark is a lifelong Boston resident, studied at Boston College, and earned a master's degree at Northeastern University. He spent eight years with Ernst &amp; Young as an international tax manager. Mark has completed multiple large audits, including Thermo Fisher Scientific, a company with over 100 subsidiaries in 72 countries. And today is a partner in his own firm, Stevens and Sacconi Associates, and he will be the only CPA on the auditing committee, and will bring years of experience to this position. So I'm asking that we support that nomination and appointment to the auditing committee. Thank you.
Thank you for your work, Counsel Siomo. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter?
If I may, Madam President, I just want to make sure that people know the term will be expiring November 1, 2020.
Great, so at this time, Counsel Siomo moves to accept the committee report and confirm Mark Sacconi. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The committee report has been passed, and Mark Sacconi has been confirmed as a Member of the Audit Committee. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0229, Counsel Presley offered the following order for hearing on the Boston Public Health Commission's Trauma Recovery Centers.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Over the last five years, I'm sorry, I've had too much coffee, or not enough. Bear with me. All right. Over the last six years, I have held five hearings on trauma, each with a different focus. Last fall, at my hearing focused specifically on city trauma support services. And during that hearing, the Boston Public Health Commission shared some promising information about a new partnership with our community health centers, which we all recognize as incredible and depending on the season, either taxed and too utilized or underutilized, but they are incredible gems and resources to our city. And I want to learn more about this partnership between the Boston Public Health Commission and our community health centers. The first eight months of data have revealed some alarming patterns in terms of the number of young people experiencing or being exposed to violence. And as we well know, in the same way that hope ripples, trauma does reverberate. This hearing order is to invite the Commission to come tell us more about the trauma recovery centers and how they plan to use the data gathered to better serve residents impacted by trauma. Now, we are certainly making progress as a city. We are gone beyond having to make the case that trauma is real and pervasive and choking at our promise as a city. So people now understand what trauma is, but we are still struggling to meet it and to support those who have experienced trauma, been exposed to trauma, in getting and keeping them on a sustainable pathway to healing, so that they can be productive in school, in our workforce, in our city, in our economy. So we are making progress. We're not yet there, and I will continue to hold hearings and to partner with the city, with advocates and survivors until we do get there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Counsel Presley. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel O'Malley's name, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Lamatina, Counsel Jackson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Linehan, and please add the Chair's name, and Counsel Zachem as well. Docket number 0229 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 0230, Counsel Presley offered the following resolution in support of H.R. 2612 and Senate Bill 1473, a bill to authorize the appropriation of funds to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention for conducting and supporting research on firearm safety and gun violence protection.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the National Network to Combat Gun Violence for their efforts and advocacy to address what is a public safety and public health crisis. The National Network to Combat Gun Violence has brought together leaders from some 30 cities to share challenges and best practices in combating and reducing gun violence. Counsel Lamatina, my good friend and our esteemed colleague, and I both are members of this coalition of municipal leaders. This specific resolution stems from a bill that our August Senator Ed Markey has sponsored in Congress to allocate federal funds to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to study gun violence and firearm safety as a public health matter. The short history of this bill is that there remains a misinterpreted law on the books called the Dickey Amendment. The Dickey Amendment bans advocating or promoting gun control. However, this has been read as banning all federal funding on gun violence research. The federal government should really be aiding cities and towns with nonpartisan, unbiased research on the causes and best practices for reducing gun violence. Senator Markey is proposing funding for the CDC to treat gun violence like the public health crisis that each and every one of us knows that it is. We need to support our federal partners in helping us research and treat the underlying causes of gun violence. I'm asking for suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution, so that we are doing our part to stand in solidarity with the makers and to advocate for this sensible step towards a solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Presley. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel O'Malley's name, add Counsel Zachem, Counsel Linehan, Counsel Lamatina, Counsel Jackson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Baker. Please add the Chair's name. At this time, Counsel Presley moves for suspension and adoption of docket number 0230. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket number 0230 has been suspended and adopted.
Docket, excuse me, docket number 0231, Counsel Campbell offered the following order for hearing to review funding for youth development programs in the public safety context.
Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand today to introduce an order for a hearing to review funding for youth development programs in the public safety context in the City of Boston. As Chair of the newly expanded Public Safety and now Criminal Justice Committee, the hope is that we begin a conversation, and a real conversation, to discuss and explore developing a proactive, systematic, coordinated response to public safety issues, which include a whole host of issues: reentry, law enforcement efforts, youth development. This order calls for a hearing to specifically look at the importance of youth development programming, the public funding that goes to those programs, the effectiveness of the programs that receive those funds, and ways in which the city can support and maximize the work of those organizations that do this work. The U.S. and most of us already know this, currently incarcerates over 2 million people. In Massachusetts, there are over 20,000 people that are incarcerated. While that rate is declining, it is substantially higher than the number of folks that are incarcerated in the mid-'70s. Since the '70s, the Massachusetts incarceration rate has roughly increased by fivefold. Of those incarcerated now, reports have shown that a large proportion of these individuals were first exposed to the system as youth. Harvard University studies have found that incarceration is greatest for those in their 20s and in their early 30s. The youngest incarcerated person in 2014, for example, was only 15 years old. Studies have also found that 60% of the black male high school dropout will go to prison before the age of 35. The majority of those released from Massachusetts state and county facilities will return to the City of Boston. For example, according to a Department of Correction report, which was a 2014 report that was actually released in 2015, 2014 report released in 2015, 21% of those criminally sentenced are released into Suffolk County. Of the 2,535 people that were released, 489 returned to Boston, the highest of any municipality in the Commonwealth. Most of these ex-offenders who returned to the City of Boston have not finished secondary school, are unable to read and do math at a high school level, lacked family and community support, lacked employment opportunities that paid a living wage, and many other services and opportunities we know are necessary for young people to become healthy adults, engaged and productive members of our society, but most importantly, to remain out of the system in the first place. For these reasons and many more, it is of utmost importance that we work with Boston's young people to prevent their entry into the criminal justice system and simultaneously enhance the city's public safety. Government has an important role to play in preventing our young people from entering the criminal justice system, and it will naturally enhance public safety of all our residents, including those young people. Youth development program, programming oftentimes fills in for support for lack of family support. It fills in for economic opportunity. It fills in for mental health. It fills in for substance abuse services, even a hug in the face of racism and prejudice. Opportunities for our city's young people are essential to raising a generation that is educated, civically engaged, healthy, confident, and productive. And lack of properly funding these types of programming, particularly programs that are high quality, that have high results in terms of outcomes, that are evaluated programs for youth development, lack of funding obviously hinders this work. We have a duty and obligation, then, to be great stewards of the monies that go to these organizations that provide youth development. And this hearing is an opportunity to explore ways to maximize these investments and to hear from young people about the importance of this program. This hearing is also an opportune time, I think, for the City of Boston and the Council to interject itself into the conversation that's happening nationally, at the state level, at the county level, related to criminal justice. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you on this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Campbell, and congratulations on your first floor speech. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, please add my name.
Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Flaherty's name. Please add Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Jackson, Counsel Lamatina, Counsel Linehan, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Presley, Counsel Zachem, and please add the Chair's name. Docket number 0231 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0232, Counsel Wu for Counsel Siomo offered the following order.
Counsel Siomo moves for suspension and passage of docket 0232. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket number 0232 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that there is one late filed matter in the hands of the clerk, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matter is added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you would, please read that addition.
Thank you, Madam President. Offered by Counsel Michael F. Flaherty in the City Council, an order for a hearing regarding Massport's development plans on city-owned slash EDIC parcels. Do I read the first and last, Madam President? Whereas the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation, known as EDIC, was established by the Massachusetts Legislature and set forth in Chapter 1097 of the Acts of 1971 for the purpose of facilitating economic development at industrial and manufacturing properties in Boston, including the Boston Marine Industrial Park and Charlestown Navy Yard. Therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to discuss Massport's intentions for development on city-owned properties and the EDIC's plan for the future of Massport's leases. Representatives from the BRA slash EDIC, Massport, and other interested parties shall be invited to attend, filed in Council February 3, 2016.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I file this to make the point that we need to have common and shared agendas with our agencies and our authorities that call Boston their home. Too many times, agencies and authorities, in this particular instance, Massport, is acting on their own agenda, much to the adverse effects of our constituents, our neighbors, and other long-term partners and stakeholders here for the city. Too many starts, and this really pertains to Marine Industrial Park, which is owned by the city slash EDIC, and we lease it to Massport on a ground lease. And I read with interest this morning that Massport has put out an RFP without really talking to the city and most definitely not coming to the City Council. If you can see from the second whereas, the EDIC was actually created through the state legislature, but it specifically states in Chapter 1097 of the Acts of 71 that any types of changes with respect to Marine Industrial Park has to come before the Boston City Council, has to come to this body for our approval, and also needs to get the Mayor of the City's approval. So with interest, I read about sort of changing uses and putting out RFPs, and they don't own the land, number one. And number two, anyone that knows anything about real estate financing knows that to get appropriate level of financing get appropriate level of financing and to be able to amortize on your investment, you need a minimum of 65 years, plus you need an option on a renewal or an extension. And in this particular instance, Massport puts out to bid something that doesn't have that type of time on it. They know it full well, and there's been no discussions about extensions. So I think it's about time that the city council now weighs in. And I can cite numerous examples down at the Marine Industrial Park with starts and stops and also missed opportunities. North Jetty for one, Parcel K, 88 Black Falcon Terminal, Commonwealth Flats, just to name a few of what I consider to be missed opportunities. And with this particular location, it presents a unique opportunity, an economic opportunity because of where it's situated, close to the internet access, up to the interstate access, but also close to the airport. But there's a real opportunity for our city and a real opportunity for the seafood industry here in Boston if we could just get on the same page with Massport. So this is really about calling out the Massport Authority, asking them to be a better and more conscientious neighbor, but also before they start to put out RFPs, to start to have conversations, talk to the city, talk to the BRA, come to the local elected officials, because they're going to need to come back to the local elected officials if they're talking about changing uses with respect to those parcels. And furthermore, we should not be putting out to bid something that has a ground lease that is going to expire before most investors are willing to weigh in on and to invest with. And if they're going to put out an RFP without getting the extension first, it's sort of like putting the car before the horse. It's completely disingenuous, but also puts us as a city, as the landowner, in a very precarious position as to whether we should renew or we should move in another direction. And you could dovetail this into, I know that our colleagues, Counsel McCarthy and Counsel O'Malley, with respect to the airplane traffic and air noise and air pollution over the district, it's just, once again, an authority and an agency making decisions on their own agenda, kind of pretty much telling everyone else to go pound sand. And this is an opportunity, in this one instance, where we actually have a tremendous amount of leverage and say as to what goes on down at Marine Industrial Park. So would urge my colleagues to either sign on or participate, because I think it sets the tone, not just for Marine Industrial Park, also over the Navy Yard, but also for other things like, you know, descending flight paths, and they're talking about helipads and helicopter traffic now with some new businesses coming into the city. So it sort of will touch off that, you know, Massport may want to operate under their own agenda, but there is a city of Boston, there is a Boston City Council, there's a mayor of Boston, there's a BRA, and they need to really work closely with us in an effort to have a shared agenda to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of the city and that the stakeholders and these ancillary uses that are down in Marine Industrial Park, for those that aren't familiar or haven't been down there, it's very precious. It's deep port access on the eastern seaboard, lots of great things going on. Every day, over 5,000 people go to work down at Marine Industrial Park. There's much more to be done down there, and there's more opportunity, but the common denominator on a lot of the missed opportunities have been on Massport properties. And it's about time we have them come in and explain what their plan is, what their vision is, and more importantly, who are they communicating with with respect to the city, and are they reaching out to the local district, city council, our colleague, and/or at large, and other members, not just with respect to Marine Industrial Park, but all the others. I know Counsel Lamatina represents a pretty significant, represents a significant portion of where their property is located, not only in his hometown of East Boston, but also in Charleston. So would love an opportunity to have an expedited hearing, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and also pardon my late file.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the author of this late file matter. I think that Counsel Flaherty has stated all the significance related to his order. I look forward, as the Chair of Planning and Development, to oversee that particular hearing and to have both, both from Massport, the BRA, EDIC, here in the chamber, telling us about their future plans going forward in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Counsel Baker. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Baker's name. Please add Counsel Siomo, Counsel Jackson, Counsel Lamatina, Counsel Linehan, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Presley, Counsel Asabi George, and please add the chair's name. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. No takers. Okay, we'll move on to adopting the consent agenda. There's one late filed matter, which in the absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is adopted. And before we close the meeting, I wanted to, well, before recognizing Counsel Presley, who wants to speak, just make sure that we are recognizing her for a very special day to wish you happy, happy birthday. So thank you for what you do day to day. And Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
You guys are the gift that keeps on giving. It's a gift, it's a gift and a blessing to call you all colleague and friends and to do this work with you. But unanimous consent, to make a statement, I wanted to acknowledge that my mother's father, who is 91 years old, a World War II, Korean War airmen veteran, against the wishes of his doctor and his bride, traveled from Chicago, oxygen tank in tow, to surprise me for my birthday, and he's with us today. And he's here. 91, come on now. But my grandfather has been a pastor for all of my life. He still pastors a church on Chicago's South Side, Rain or Shine Baptist Church, delivers a sermon and does, you know, everything that you're supposed to do in pastoring a church and shepherding a flock. And I grew up at his knee, listening to his oratory. So if y'all think I speak too loud or too long, it's his fault. Okay, so welcome, granddaddy, and thank you all for receiving him so well.
Thank you very much for your service. The Chair neglected, we need to take a slight detour back to the late file, the Chair neglected to assign it to a committee. So just to note, Madam Clerk, that the first late file matter will be assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development. Okay, at this time, I'd ask for all guests and members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Lamatina, Mary Fumara. For Counselors Lamatina and Baker, Kempton Fleming Jr. For Counsel McCarthy, Boston Fire Department Lieutenant James Michael McCarthy, Counsel McCarthy's godfather. For Counsel O'Malley, Helen Vogel. A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, February 10th, at noon. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the council is adjourned.